Oh, no, I didn't get that.
I'd like to call this meeting of the County Commission together. Please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, could you call our roll, please?
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Graytop.
Here.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda this evening?
I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
For? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now is the portion of our meeting where we ask citizens who have comments to address the Board of Commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to address the commission? Yes, sir. Have you filled out a card yet? Okay. We'll get you a card. You can fill out. Would you please go up to the podium so that...
Is he on human services question?
Yeah. All right, why don't we wait till the Ways and Means Committee comes up and in the interim, we'll get you one of the cards to fill out. Okay, thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Make sure it doesn't go off.
Any updates? Conceptual initiatives from administration? We had no old business. Our first new business item is the Coast to Coast Prescription Discount Program.
Want me to jump in?
Would you please?
The Coast to Coast Discount Card Program is an initiative that was sent to us. It's basically a discount prescription card that's available free of charge to all the citizens of St. Clair County. They also offer discounts on hearing aids, vision, dental. They provide all the cards, the marketing of the program, and all of the costs associated with it. The benefit to the county, not only will it improve the health of our citizens and allow them a discount on it for every prescription that is purchased using that card, we get a royalty back of $1.25 per month.
Thank you, Chris.
Question for you, and Dr. Merkin Thompson in the room here. Was that the one that Oakland County uses? Okay.
Yes.
And they've been extremely successful.
Yeah, very good.
Commissioner Graytop.
If it doesn't cost anybody to get a card and we get a royalty, where's the funding come from for this card?
I believe they get a portion from the drug companies.
So the drug companies are funding this?
So I think what they do is they negotiate discounts with places that fill the prescriptions to basically, if you will, get customers there in exchange for the discounts, like Walmart and places like that. And in turn, they get a piece of it and then we get a piece of that. And I checked with one county and a couple websites at other counties and big time accolades about how this thing worked. So kind of a no lose for citizens because they get the card and if it doesn't work for them, it doesn't cost them anything and they don't have to use it. But they were raving about the deals in Oakland County and some other counties.
Does nothing to do with your income or anything like that?
No, not at all. And the, under the contract, the royalty that we receive is $1.24 per claim and we receive it on a monthly basis.
Do we push this out or market it or...
Actually, they would like to schedule a press release or a press conference, which they will appear at. And then they will put it on, we can put a link on our website, their website, they advertise in all of the local...
Okay, very good.
Make a motion, we send it on the full board. Support.
We have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item that we have on the agenda is the AT&amp;T Long Distance Agreement for the Health Department.
Motion to send it to the full board. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third item under new business is an amended agreement with Professional Counseling Center for Supportive Visitation for the Department of Health and Human Services.
Mr. Chairman, oops, sorry.
Go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion then we'll...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to send it to full board. Full board.
Please.
Hi.
Hello. Good evening.
We are requesting, I'm Chris Anderson, I'm from the Department of Health and Human Services. We are requesting your approval on amending our contract with Professional Counseling Center for Supportive Visitation. We did begin this contract October 1st and it does provide visitation for our families that working with foster care. However, we're requesting that this contract be amended to reduce the amount down to what is spent at the end of April so that we can reallocate those funds to the family foster care line.
Thank you. I remember when we were doing this when I was on that, on that board. Are there any questions? So we have a motion to...
Well, I believe you already have the motion in.
Yes.
I see it substantially gone down.
Yes. Absolutely. We're actually ending the contract prematurely. We're going to be... We need to locate additional funds to support the children that are currently in foster care right now. We've had a rise in the children that have become county funded. County funds really depend on the household at the time of removal, the month of removal. So the family's economic situation at that time determines the funding source that supports the child while they're in foster care. Because we've had a rise in that, our budget as projected is not going to be sufficient to meet those needs throughout the course of the year. So we're trying, in addition, in essence, instead of asking for more money from the board for county funds for childcare fund, we're reducing a contract that's currently funded through county childcare funds to reallocate those funds. So the program itself is great and is working and we do anticipate that next fiscal year we'll want to pick that program back up again. However, the funds for supporting children in foster care is our primary...
And this amended contract, is that approved and goes forward, you will then have sufficient funds to continue internally with this?
It is our hope, yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next item is an amended agreement with the Professional Counseling Center on Parent Education Group.
I would so move.
Support.
Go ahead. Would you like to give us a brief explanation of this also?
Absolutely. Same thing, we have a contract currently funded through childcare fund with Professional Counseling Center for Parent Education Group. This program is working great, it's just starting to get up and running. However, we need the funds to support the foster care line for the children in care. So we're looking to reallocate those funds by terminating this contract early. So the contract reduction would equal the expenditures through April, anticipating the remainder would be reallocated to foster care line.
Commissioner Graytop?
It's a housekeeping question. Second line there, it says that the mailing address for the county is 220 Fort Street. Is that, is that correct?
That would be the DHS off this side, so if it's a middle run, this side over here, that's 220 Fort.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
We do.
We do.
I thought we did. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I see that the last item, the childcare fund budget amendment, is that where the money's going?
That's, yes, yes, it is. So that's your 2091 in your packet, that's where we're reallocating our funds to show the end results of what we're projecting to spend.
I make a motion to approve to send to the full board. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What we've done this evening as part of our committee process is we've taken these items, we've reviewed them, and we're sending them on to our second meeting of the month, which would be May 19th for final approval. This is what we typically do in our Board of Commissioners, it's a two-step process where we first entertain the resolution and finally approve it at the second meeting. So, next, are there any other human services items to come before us? Hearing none. For information only, we have a notice from the Health Department on accreditation. We have the Health Department Points of Interest Report and Health Advisory Board resignation. Make a motion to receive and file?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to receive and file the packets?
So moved. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A move we adjourned.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get this right, turn in the right direction this time? That's right.
We'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judicial and Public Safety Committee Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamian.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Graytop.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
For?
We have motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. We have State of the Animal Control, Sheriff Donlin.
Well, good afternoon, and today I have the last. Work here.
Okay, I got your tongue?
Well, we're just getting her going here. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, well, today is the Phase Four, so this will be the last one of our State of the County. And as you know, we start from our largest to our smallest, we had our State of Our Corrections, Uniformed Service Drug Task Force, our Marine Dive Team, and now we have our Animal Control, our Phase Four for your presentations. We're going to talk tonight about building additions, our big additions in 2015. Touch on our statistics and our budgets, we've got about 18 slides, so I'll zip through this real quick. I have with me Stephanie Ignish, who is our office manager, and she is the sweat and the muscle and the brains behind Animal Control. So a big thank you for what a great job Stephanie does here at Animal Control. We have a mission and a vision statement, but we're just going to touch a little bit on our vision statement. Basically, our maintaining the humane treatment of animals, because that's what Animal Control is, our humane treatment. It is a difficult job, far more difficult than I thought when we took this over. A lot of animals in St. Clair County, far more than I ever thought, a lot more goes on out there than people really realize. Our biggest changes last year were our building changes. We received a fund from the Rose Cousins Trust Fund. I think Commissioner McConnell, you may know Rose Cousins, it was a wonderful, wonderful woman from Emmett, I might add. And she donated in her will to Animal Control. And we were able to do some much-needed additions to the building out there. We did a surgical laboratory, a nursery, and then a new building ventilation system, and I've got some pictures I'll show you. And the ventilation system, basically, it would keep the fresh air moving to stop the disease from spreading throughout the building, as well as a containment isolation, and we changed interior doors and walls so we could put our strays away from our animals that are up for adoption. So it was just a, an incredible gift that was well-dressed from Rose Cousins. This is a little picture of our new addition, this is it right here. And I know some of the commissioners, I believe Commissioner Graytop was there for the, and McConnell was there for the addition. So you saw the inside of it there, located right there on Grizzle Road, just west of 32nd. There is another inside picture of our surgical unit that was that addition from the inside that was put together in the last year. Nolan Construction out of Goodles did the work for us, did an incredible job. That's another kind of point of view from our inside of it. One of the other big things that go on is our census program. We revamped the census program. Prior to taking over Animal Control, they would just use citizens off the street, hire them, they weren't doing backgrounds. There was no method to how they did this. We used deputies, primarily Marine Division folks on their off time to do the census because they have some powers. We do assign areas, so it's much like direct to patrol in our uniformed services. We pick out locations so there's no duplication, we're breaking the county into quadrants, so we hit it all. So there's a method to how we do it. And lastly, there's immediate enforcement. Every one of the deputies doing the enforcement and doing the census can issue citations. When it was done before, we'd have college kids there, they'd pull out a phone book, look at addresses, and then just go about their business. And they'd give follow-up the next day, this one needs a ticket, this one needs follow-up. And it just, it created more work than it was necessary. We ended up having twice as much work after the census than we did before. This way, it's basically done immediately. Enforcement, if needed, the right people are doing it, very, very productive use of our time. Inmate labor, we'll touch on that as well, this is a big one. If you take a look here, there's one of our inmates there working. We moved into females as well out there, and we only do females during the licensing period. 30 hours a week for about 20 hours, 20 weeks a year, 30 hours. Generally, it's two females, about 600 hours is what they put in. And we times that, times minimum wage. It's probably conservative, it's a data entry, I would guess it might be a little higher than that in the outside, but we do it at minimum wage at about 4,800. Four male trustees, and that is all year round. We never go by without having our four male trustees out there. So we have 184 hours per week, 52 weeks a year, so there's no, there's no days off when you're in jail and you're a trustee. So they did about 9,500 hours, 77,000 is what that would have cost us if we were hiring people at minimum wage. So our inmate labor was about 83,000 that was saved. And it really, it helps out the inmates because as you know, when you're a trustee, you don't have any bill assigned to you. So you're working for your stay at the county jail. So when you're released, you have no bill hanging out of your head that you have to pay later. And also, this is one of the more sought-after jobs. You know, the inmates love to be out there with the animals, it's really a popular job versus being in the kitchen. That is actually even more hours than this is what you work if you're a kitchen trustee with the three meals a day, 1,500 meals. A, you know, a day we put out there, it's a lot of work. So this is a prime job at the sheriff's office if you happen to be lucky enough to get it. Volunteer program as well, we do this with our public. Unfortunately, you know, these animals are housed in a kennel 24/7. So when we have our volunteers, they can come out, they can interact, they can groom, they can walk the cats, the dogs, whatever they want to. And it works very well with our neighbors, right behind the Animal Control is Portier Motorcycle Club. And I can tell you, they're great neighbors. They have that beautiful enclosed dirt track and they let us take our animals and walk around on the tracks with them as long as, obviously, we clean up. So we have a steady group of volunteers, we're always looking for more people that can get the animals out of the cages there. Animal intake, you can see the owner surrender and then the strays. And those are pretty consistent in the last three years when you look at it. Strays primarily are the cats. Now, I might add that we're the only facility in about 75-mile area. The rate is it takes stray cats, because we take all the feral cats and all these different animals that are less desirable. And that brings our numbers up very high. So that shows you our consistency. And then we have the owner surrenders. I've purchased three dogs from Animal Control since I've been in office, and two of them were owner surrenders. So, you know, a variety of reasons, you know, people move, they get divorced, something happens, they can't take care of it or can't have the dog anymore and they surrender them. And those are, those are just wonderful pets, wonderful pets to have. Stray animals as well, it's just a picture there of some of our housing there as well, you know, the stray animals. Again, that is a big part of our intake as well. The adoptions, as you see, the dogs have stayed consistent, cats have gone up. And I'll tell you, there's two big factors that have gone up. One is the Rose Cousins Fund paid for the new air ventilation. And with the air purification and ventilation, the cats are so much more healthier, so they have a better survival rate. That brings more of them up for adoption. The second thing, and you'll see a picture coming up, is we moved the interior of the building all around. Once we ended up with this fund to change our interior, and we moved the cats directly into the front of the building. So when you walk in, the first thing you see is the cats in a big room, kind of people watching all day. And a good many people will show up to look for a dog and then they end up taking a cat home. So it's just worked out perfect. You know, they'll walk by and say, oh, look at that beautiful cat. And they never get to the dog, so they leave with a dog and a cat, which is good for us. It probably makes some people unhappy when they get home and find out that there's a cat now in the house too. But it's worked out really well, and you can see our numbers are climbing, so we're very happy about that. Adoption center as well, this is kind of a picture of that cat room we talked about. That's just a small corner of it. But again, when you walk right in the front doors, it's right on the south side, big, big, big room. And the cats just have the life of leisure there. They watch people and they look out at the sunny windows and watch people all afternoon and hope for an adoption as well. Our euthanization rates were a little bit down this year, as you see. Now, a couple things to keep in mind, it's primarily cats versus dogs. But there's a couple factors that I really want to touch on. Number one, we're government, we're county animal control, we cannot turn down a single animal that comes in there. That is going to affect your euthanization rates. You know, you have sick, you have diseased, and you have vicious and injured animals that come in there, whether they're hit by a car, whether the animal was diseased or dying, it brings up your rates. We also provide the euthanization service as well to the public, a fraction of what it costs at a veterinarian. It's about $35 if you go through our people, and that changes our numbers as well. Now, every animal that comes in there has to go through a temperaments test, aggression temperaments. And if you fail that test, you're euthanized. So, you know, keep in mind, you may have a vicious dog that brought in as a stray. As soon as it flunks that test, we can't put that dog into adoption. So that affects our rates. And again, the price if you decide to have your animal euthanized. When it was, when it was finally time for one of my dogs to be put down, I took him to the Animal Control and did it that way. And I think many people do that. So those are our numbers. They're down, which makes us happy, but that is the nature of the business that we're in unfortunately, being a public animal control. Sent to rescues, we're really happy about this number. Our dogs have gone consistently up, but the cats went really high up in the last two years. We're partnering with about 85 different rescues. Stephanie is on the phone continually. We've really tried to target rescues that will take cats because we have such a number of cats that come into the building, as you saw with our statistics, there's just a tremendous amount of them. But these are great numbers that are coming and they're on the rise, so we're very, very happy to see that. Revenue as well, revenue is in very good shape when you look at our numbers here. This is the shelter, and then this is our licensing, which is a big piece of the licensing. When you think about everybody that owns a dog in St. Clair County, if they're licensed, then that's a, that's a big number. And there's a lot of, lot of data, a lot of work to track in all of that. But those shows our revenues in the last year. I've got it broke down a little more on the next slide, but that is our total, which is over $500,000 in revenue in that building. Now, when we look at our total and we break it down, I'll go over the last two years. Dog licensing, we were up better than $10,000 this year on dog licensing. A lot of that is public awareness, we're on the radio every Friday, we're talking about licensing, making it easy for people to get their dog license.
It's not a change in rates, that's...
No change, no, no.
So just more licenses going out?
The rate change has to go through the board if we change the rates, so no change and no plans for that. Charges for services as well, that would be reclaiming animals, quarantining, animal surrender as well. That's a relatively small number. Sales, these would be our adoptions as well going in here. And then we had a private source donation in here, and we'll get a little of that, people will donate monies, a small amount there, but total about 503. The part that we're very happy about is we're budgeted at $391. We were actually, came in at $382, so we were under budget and we returned to the general fund 123,000. So, you know, when I look at the Animal Control, I think it's a well-oiled machine out there. When we see that, that we're under budget, we're generating revenue and we're providing a very, very important service for the community. In closing, some of our future improvements, and these are our wish lists, that I have this on every one of my presentations with a number of things that we always talk about. Fence dog run, you know, right now, we own the building. We have great relationship with Portier Motorcycle Club when we have volunteers to walk the dogs. But a fenced dog run, we can let the dogs out during the day, it would give them a lot more exercise, it would be very, very good for animals. Working on a new software program as well that'll help us particularly with the licensing. Microchipping the animals, we provide that for a fee. We'd like to be able to do it for a much cheaper fee, almost free, because so many people lose their pets, they come in, they reclaim them. They get lost again, they have no way to track them, I mean, many, many, many nice dogs. Cats end up in our Animal Control with no collars, there's no license, there's no way to figure out whose pet this was. We know it's a pet, they don't come look for them, they, for whatever reason. If they were microchipped and we were able to microchip more of these animals, we'd be able to turn a lot more back over to the owners when they were lost. And if we can spend a little money providing that service, I think that would be a real benefit to our community. Part-time staff office, obviously, we're busy in there, we provide a lot of inmate labor. We've got a, one of our front office support staff is definitely full-time work there. And the second thing that we always talk about is the part-time Animal Control Officer. We have Officer Ken Jewell, who's our full-time Animal Control Officer, just an incredible worker. He runs from one edge of the county to the next doing his job. But it would be very effective to bring in a part-time person, maybe working a noon till 8:00 or a 2:00 to 10:00 after he goes home at 4:00. Get that second truck out there on the road tracking down dogs, it would really be effective. Particularly if we did it at a part-time, no benefit, 28-hour-a-week type job. So those are, those are kind of our wish list, we're thinking about, we may come back and talk to you about it in the next six or 10 months, we'll see. But that is our thumb sketch of our Animal Control. Do you have any questions? Happy to answer them, yes.
This one, imagine you did a business plan, if you get a part-time, I'm sure you go out there and assist, have you done the additional animals that are going to get picked up for any additional revenues or expenses that would be with that job? I don't know if you got that part yet.
Well, there's going to be expenses with the job, no question about it, because there's going to be a salary. It's going to be, I'm sure, a pretty minimum salary. Where it would really help us is that, right now, that burden is on the Patrol Division. You know, a big reason that we ended up with Animal Control is 16 hours out of 25 hours a day, I was responsible for it anyhow. But as you know, when we did our presentation on the Uniformed Services, our deputies are handling 45,000-plus calls for service a year. And they go from call to call and it's by priority. I just got an earful from someone that waited two hours for a car this morning in the ditch. Well, every time the officer got close, they got diverted to a priority domestic or something more pressing. Animals are on the bottom of that totem pole. So what it does is it frees up Patrol, it provides a better service. I haven't put the numbers together as...
The short version would be that it will assist you in the animal program, but it'll also improve public safety.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, no question about it. And we do get a little bit of blowback from... And we do get a little bit of blowback from some of the other law enforcement agencies when it comes to picking up their own dogs, and we deal with that, though.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. I was out there early on in my career, pre getting all the improvements. The animal shelter was not a nice place back in the day, to say the least, you know? And they went through and did a lot of the improvements, the heating, cooling, I mean, it was, you know, problem with diseased animals, just a whole litany of things, you know? And it's pretty amazing to see where that facility has come from back then till today, so it's...
Well, I appreciate it. You know, we've got a great staff, and I see Ron Marsh is here. We've had a lot of help with maintenance, just fixing a lot of stuff, staying on top of it. And then again, you know, we're able to sink a little bit of money into that facility out there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I tell you, that ventilation system is a big one. It's really a big one, but it has really turned itself around, and we're very proud of it. And again, it's great staff.
Yeah, just one other comment. I see you brought one of your adoptable animals tonight. I heard he's looking for a good home. He's a 65-year-old stray. He's known as a dog hunter, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, so I don't want to see him euthanized anytime soon.
He's been threatened with euthanasia. I will say that he adopted a canine out of our dog pound probably six months ago. So, you know, one of the benefits of the sheriff's office, there's always someone looking for a dog, and we adopt a lot of them out to our employees, you know? Very, very common. I would go as far as to say that, but big supporter, so that's why he's here tonight. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Do we need a motion to accept that report?
We don't.
Okay. Conceptual initiatives?
We have none.
Any old business? New business? We have a grant for the safety vest, the 50% match. Then we send it on to the full board. This is for final approval, because the grant has got to be submitted by the 16th, and it's going to miss our meeting. So we have motion in support for final approval?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Security grant.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board?
Support.
Motion in support. Does anybody have any questions?
Number seems to be getting smaller and smaller.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The 2016 Fort Security Grant for the dive team.
I make the motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
Do we have motion in support? Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judicial public safety matters? Seeing none, information only, nothing, receiving file packets?
So moved.
Support.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Howard, you next?
Yep.
Please.
Like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee in order. Could we take the roll, please?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Hey, Mark, can you catch those lights for us?
Commissioner Bone?
Sorry, here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, do we have any updates from commissioners regarding environmental or public works? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No.
We have no old business, moving to new business. We have a resolution from Parks and Rec, some good news here, and it has Resolution 1614, the Pine River Property Acquisition Grant Contract. That's the property adjacent to Goodell's Park.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got, I think, a 50% match on the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund for that. And then Resolution 1613 for the Bell River Property Acquisition Grant, that's property adjacent to the Columbus County Park. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner McConnell, and second by, I forgot, Commissioner Dunn. Now, that one is a Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant. I believe that was 75%. So, it adds a whole lot of frontage on the Bell River.
How many acres is that, about 40 or? How many acres on the Bell River?
25.
25, 25.99.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. The Fort Grasset Beach Sand Trucking and Grading. Mark Bushu, our director is here.
Make a motion, we do send it to the full board?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been made a second. I didn't give you any numbers.
We're still going forward.
We can discuss it, Mark, and we can vote yes or no. I have, we did receive proposals. The good news is the low bid is under the $10,000 threshold for board action, so I would be happy to distribute them to you if you would like, and you can act on them if you like, but it's under $10,000.
But all I'd want is historical, how much funds have been used to restore the beach to the sand?
Each year, we expend money to maintain the beach, and we're consistent this year. Any repairs, we won't know until after the permit is approved by the DNR, and then we bid out that work. The bids that we got currently just are to bring sand in under the current permit that doesn't allow us to do the more aggressive restoration.
I guess it's going to be a prevailing wind that we always have sand taken away. We don't have a lot here where sand is actually added to it from the, just naturally.
We get, the sand is added to Fort Grasset Light Station, unfortunately, and it's always lost at the beach. So this contract is to truck excess sand that's inundating our fence lines at the light station.
Does it disappear, end up in Canada? Can we get it?
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, do we have a lot of exposed concrete this year? Yes, more than we've ever had. Every time there's a northeasterly wind, it's like there goes some more sand.
Mark, can I get a copy of those results for the bid?
Yes, yes. Okay. Apparently, we do not need a motion then, if I understood you correctly. Unless you want to approve the bid under $10,000.
There's no such thing. It's approved by administration under 10, so...
Okay. Thank you for your information, Mark, and we will move on to the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. I would entertain a motion to receive and file that report.
So moved.
Need a second?
Support.
There's not a report there.
Pardon?
There wasn't a report submitted.
No report was submitted? Yeah. Hmm. Okay, other environmental matters? None. Information only, the Road Commission 2015 Financial Report, the Department of Public Works 2015 Financial Report, Parks and Rec Monthly Financial Documents, City of Port Huron Notice of Informational Meeting, East Quay Street Parking Lot Improvement.
I move those to be received and filed.
Okay, it's been made. It's been supported by Commissioner Greata. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. At this time, I would entertain a motion, receive and file packets related to environmental and public works matters?
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved and supported by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion, we are adjourned.
You've got to bring it in.
I know.
Can you get back to this screen?
I, uh... There you go.
I was, you know... This time, I'd like to call Ways and Means Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Trying to get over to the other packet.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Greata?
Here.
Okay, we're moving on to additions, deletion, changes to the agenda. I see we have one.
Would the chairman make a motion that we add 2016 budget adjustments to Item 7?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
To accept the amended agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we do have a citizen, which you could be heard, Charles Koebe. If I pronounce that correct? Koebe, okay. Please?
My name's Charles Koebe, 5816 Lake Shore, Fort Grasset. And I'm here, kind of at a last moment. I'm a, my profession is land surveyor, and I put my name in for county surveyor for the next election. And apparently, I am running unopposed, and found out yesterday from Barb Barnes out at the landfill that there was an item on the agenda this evening pertaining to the county surveyor position and issues that are going to be discussed this evening, and I'm unprepared. I guess I don't know what's really what's up, so I'm here to introduce myself and put a face with the name. That's about it for a moment.
Appreciate it. Normally, what we do is when somebody addresses the board, we really don't have too much question and answers, but appreciate you coming in, and we will be addressing that under 7E. We'll go with that, and probably get a, oh, an explanation from our county administrator. Detailed one.
Thank you for coming in, introducing yourself.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to updates. Do we have any updates? Seeing none. Number five, conceptual initiatives, we have none. Moving on to old business, we have none. We'll move on to 7A, Resolution 1615, Federal Surplus Program Approval.
Make the motion.
Court.
Any discussion? All in favor, sending it to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, Library Replacement Boiler Project.
I make the motion to move it to full board? Support.
Any discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
Was this the one that we had an adjustment to?
Yeah, he's had a revise in my house, that too.
Okay.
You want to, Ron showed up. You want to give us an explanation, you showed up, if you would, please.
Boiler broke.
Short and sweet. Is the contingency just a normal item?
Appreciate you being here, Ron. Maybe the others don't, but I do.
Good evening. What do you need to know?
Boiler broke.
Really broken.
Well, two years ago, we looked at this project and knew that it was going to be coming down the chute, so we started to prepare for it. So we got some preliminary budget numbers and started to prepare to set aside funds for the project. We've kind of spearheaded the initiative after we had another failure early this winter and turned our attention to maybe getting it proactive, done proactively. So we went through the county's cooperative purchasing, went through the purchasing process, and we had six bids come in. We had a lot more people at the pre-bid meeting, so we thought we might have more interest, but we had projected a target project of $100,000, and it came in under that, so we're encouraged. We did our due diligence to find that the county, we followed up on all of his information.
Part of the reason, because part of this, it is our main library. We've been then said not to exceed $93,000 three years before. It is our main library and might be a good burden of faith or whatever. Appreciate it.
Well, currently, if the unit fails, it's the only heating unit, heating source in the building. We choose to install two boilers, two smaller boilers that are high-efficiency boilers, so we'll be able to get energy rebates for the installation, and it should serve the building for another 25 years.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Ron? Howard, go ahead.
Just kind of a hypothetical. Here, several years ago, we discussed possibly making additions to the library, especially for reading rooms for adults and children. Would these new boilers be sufficient to handle such an addition? Probably about 25% expansion. These boilers are sized to handle 66% of the current building's load each, so it's got about 130% expansion, so you, they're roughly 30,000 square feet in the building now, so you could probably accept another 10,000 square feet and still have enough capacity in these boilers. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Greata?
Looking at the amended piece that came out from administration, the low bid still remains at 84822.
Yes.
That didn't change. And my last question is, this comes out of county's money, doesn't come out of the library?
Correct. We're using public improvement funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ron.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7C, Health Department Manning Table Change. It's a new position. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Court.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7D, Employment Agreement for Dr. Merkentan.
I would so move.
Court.
Any discussion?
Doing an outstanding job.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Got a job.
Moving on to 7E, the resignation of our surveyor. I could entertain a motion, then I can ask our administrator.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
No, we need to know which option you want to take.
Oh, prior to? Okay.
Well, that's, that's what the motion needs to be. There's two options.
Would you give us an explanation?
We did receive notice that our current county surveyor, it is an elected position. His, his license will be expiring this year, and he has no interest in renewing his license, and therefore will be resigning from his position as the county surveyor. In order to be the surveyor, you must be a registered licensed surveyor with the state of Michigan. There are really two options available to the board to proceed with this. Ms. Morris did contact Corporation Counsel and reviewed this very quickly. The board does have the option of either, A, abolishing the office itself, the elected office. And if they choose to do so, they can only do so prior to May 15th, the year in which the position is up for election. The other option is to allow the presiding or senior judge of the probate court, the county clerk, and the prosecuting attorney to find and appoint a suitable person to fill that vacancy. The board this evening needs to make a decision on whether or not they want to abolish the position, or turn this matter over to the, the courts, the clerk and the prosecuting attorney committee of the three, to make a decision on filling the position.
If I could ask you, to what extent have we used a surveyor in the past in St. Clair County?
Actually, the county surveyor, his primary job is to oversee the remonumentation program. The remonumentation program is funded through fees that anyone who files a legal document on the, on a parcel, whether it's in exchange of a parcel or a parcel split, when they file a document, there is a charge that has been added on to that by the state of Michigan. Those funds come back to fund our program, our remonumentation program. And we've given you reports on the remonumentation program. It's the duty of the surveyor to oversee all of the work that is contracted by local surveyors to remon the community. They also review all the grant paperwork, sign off on all the grant paperwork. Every year, they are also charged with ensuring that the contracts to conduct the work are split up fairly within the community. So they really oversee the entire program for the county.
Mr. Graytop? I have a question, I suppose directed toward Mr. Fletcher. If we were to abolish this position, could these grant certifications be accomplished by our administrator controller?
No, I think it has to be a licensed surveyor.
Could we hire a licensed surveyor just for that particular purpose?
Yeah.
Why would we even want to screw around with it, I guess?
The, Mr. Kube, I think, is willing to accept the appointment, right, which is why he was here. So I, I would recommend that you just refer his name to the committee. I'm sure they'll appoint him. And he's, and I, I know him. He's done work for us. He's worked at an engineering firm here locally. He's excellent. And I think we're lucky. He stepped up, because a lot of places go without, because surveyors are so busy. So I would just recommend that you elect the option to have somebody pointed and send it over to the committee, and it'll be done.
If I could, Gary, on information given to us, this position has to be filled by May 15th. Do we have to take action?
No, you, if you decide to abolish the office, you've got to do it by May 15th.
If you choose not, it'll go through its natural course, and then...
Go over for appointment, and then...
So, I don't know if we need, oh, yes, Carl.
So is there a savings if we abolish the position?
Well, there is a small salary that this individual receives. I think it's about 13,000 a year.
13,000 to 15,000, somewhere in there.
13,000 to 15,000 dollars a year they receive in salary. If the position is abolished, then this work, the additional work that would be conducted, would fall back on a staff person. We may end up seeing either some overtime, or I, I believe there will be additional costs.
There will be additional costs if we eliminate the position?
If you eliminate the position of the, my recommendation would be is, is you do replace with another elected county surveyor. The system has been working well since we established it.
See now, we didn't have any specifics to the motion. We were going to forward that to the full board. Do we need to have that motion withdrawn first before we take another motion?
She took it out, Gary.
All right. We have a recommendation for our administrator, and I believe it's the one to maintain as it is currently is. Will be a cost savings to the county, so can I have a...
I, you have a question? So the resolution is supposed to be to forward this name to the committee?
Right.
Also move?
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
Resolution, I just wasn't sure what they were doing.
All right, we'll now move on to 7F. Or do we need to have a motion to accept the resignation? Okay. All right, moving on to 7F, Budget Adjustments, 2016 Budget Adjustments.
Thank you. There's a year.
Do you have the memo, Gary?
I've been here all day.
I believe we need to have these forwarded to the full board. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. This time, move on to other Ways and Means Matters. Do we have any? Seeing none. Nine peg. Can I have motion for the, file the I R A Township Notice of Public Hearing?
Move to receive and file the I R A Township Notice on Public Hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Can I have motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
A second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Chair?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.